Ang susunod na programa ay Rated PG. Patnubay at gabay ng magulang ay kailangan sa mga batang manonood.
The main 23, 22 regular session of San Brian is full to order. The gentleman from the safety will perform the reading of scripture and indication. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise.
Our speaker will state a problem. It does spell according to chapter 8, verse 15 of the script. And we know that all things God works for those who do so love Him, there are people according in principle of course. For those that, for you know, He was supposed to be stained, they were to be born to the He makes to decide, that He might be firstborn among many brothers and sisters. And those who believe in Him, they also call it those who grow. They also justify those who justify. They also glorify. So what is that? It does play, the Lord Father is our only spirit. Amen, Father. We come to you today asking for your greatness. Visit down and support us as we today in this meeting. Help us in courage and meaningful discussions. Allow us to grow closer as a group and in your balance of humanity. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions and continue to remind us that all we do, all we do here today allow that we are pleased to support the pursuit of love for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. You have these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Prayer for the unity. God, our Father, we come to you in our need to ask your protection against the 2018 coronavirus that has claimed lives and has affected many. We pray for those grace for the people tasked with studying the natural and growth of this virus and this disease and for us believing the died of its transmission. Guide, dance, and my spiritual experts that we may register to receive the tormentance and compassion and for those targeted and protected diseases that find cure and solution to this epidemic. We pray for those affected, many to restore to health soon. Grant us grace to work for the good of all and to keep those help in need. Grant this glory to Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of your spirit. God, whoever and ever. Amen.
Let us sing the last prayer. The safety of the San Brian is directed to full draw.
Our Honorable Deputy Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer according to the AMT, present the Honorable Chief Deputy Jomagita, on leave. Honorable Jesse S. Ambuang, present. Honorable Joseph B. Aclaud, present. The Honorable Donna R. Liu, present. The Honorable Isaiah Suklao Jr., on leave. Honorable Vincent G. Quanteo, present. The Honorable Arroyo Manoya, on leave. Honorable Norbert D. Undag Senior, present. Honorable Ali in Palatwa, present. The Honorable Joseph L. Magminay, present. Honorable Alfredo I. Hino Jr., present. Honorable Mayra S. Bond Donzaga, present. And the Honorable Julie P. Gomorron, present. The Presiding Officer, the Majesty of the U.S.
The Majesty of the U.S. for the San Brian. The President Soros is hereby declared. I understand that the Honorable Vincent Bonavol would like to ask for a very excuse. And so ladies and gentlemen, shall we excuse the Honorable Mr. Another public engagement. So sir, Bonavol, would you pleasure?
Yes, I would like to ask permission from this Honorable man that I will be excused since I was invited to be the acting officer of the federated PTA of the Okeeta City Central Elementary School. With your permission, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Without objection, the Honorable Vincent Bonavol is permitted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. And this party has a right to make our first line. Thank you for giving my duty to the leader. The Honorable Donna R. Liu, please.
To the afternoon, sir Presiding, and to the afternoon to each and every one for the announcement of our guests and visitors for today's regular session, let me acknowledge our four guests from the Okeeta Community Channel, who begin at the first, Mr. Rolis Anzolda and Mr. Yana Tito Chone. And two of our broadcasters from the city of Okeeta, Mr. Boyce and Mr. John McAlpin.
Thank you for attending the session. Your presence do inspire us. So, if you find that one is a little in search or a certain sign, so if you're in your order of meeting, please.
Signed by all the members present except for four. Hi, gentlemen, we were on leave last session and two, two while we leave about since today. I so move for the adoption and approval of the journal number 22 and the minutes of May 16, 2022 regular session.
Is there any comment required? Question? To emotionally approve of acceptance of the journal number 23 and the minutes of the main 16, 2052 regular session. The chair, she is not comfortable, is approved.
Please, communitar board, K, communitar board number 22-05-087. May I call on the Honorable gentlemen from San San Bela.
The gentleman from San San, he is in the morning. The Honorable May L. D. Undag Senior is recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Presiding. We do have to prove it for him. But therefore, number 22-05-087. And Mr. President, therefore, this committee will give us suggestions. Our department is only part of eight applications for, for the new change period. Number two is three applications for the issuance of union tax. Three is one application for the renewal of the permits and cancellation of expired tax. And the committee chose that these applicants with regards to the new updates of unit, issuance of unit tax, and the issuance of the new entry of renewal of the permits have submitted all the requirements necessary for the attachment of their applications. Therefore, they are most likely to apply to the district's way to the city. Therefore, they just committed that their applications will be approved. Mr. President, in behalf of committee, I recommend for the action of committee for number 22-05-087 and the tax, for policy, the solution of the base of the tax. Thus, I am a putu in the solution of proving applications for the new change of unit, applications for issuance of the new agreement and the execution of expired tax. As per committee report number 22-05-087 of the committee of transportation, passing it on second and final reading.
It is observed that the recommendation of the first committee report number 22-05-067 has included the attached books with motion number 107-2022. And the mentioned applications are detailed in the committee report as stated and will ask in the attached proposal city resolution. Is there any comment remarks on the recommendation of the committee chair for the adoption approval of committee report number 22-06-087 including the attached books with city resolution number 107-2022. The few chair, he is done. Madam, your question, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. On the recommendation of the chairman of committee of transportation for taking to the applications for the new one and change of limit and new franchises for moderate prices and for higher application for equal advantage and cancellation of expired MTO with no objection, I so move for the adoption and approval of committee report number 22-05-087 as well as passing on second and final reading the accompanying proposal city resolution number 107-2022.
There is a motion for the adoption approval of committee report number 22-05-087 and the accompanying proposed city resolution number 107-2022 that it be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Remake, the chair, he is done. The motion is approved.
The committee report number 22-05-087 may I call on the Honorable gentleman from Abu Suro.
The gentleman from Abu Suro is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and acting majority floor leader. Committee report number 22-05-088 with the subject barangay supplemental budget number one, CY 2021 of barangay Dugan Sur in the total amount of 40,000. Barangay supplemental budget number two, CY 2022. For CY, the dividend of barangay Yalay in the total amount of 9,000 and barangay Tabuk Norte in the total amount of 61,000. Mr. Presiding Officer, the three barangay supplemental budget was reviewed by this committee and found operative in its entirety pursuant to section 333 of Republic Act 7116 subject to budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. In the honor of the committee, this representation recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-05-088. And to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number 108-2022 entitled resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 01-2022 of barangay Dugan Sur, appropriation ordinance number 02-2022 of barangay Tabuk Norte, and appropriation ordinance number 03-2022 of barangay Yalay. All this city operative in its entirety, Mr. Presiding, is deserved.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comment? Remake. On the recommendation of the committee chair, committee of finance budget and appropriations for the adoption approval of committee report number 22-05-088 including the attached proposal city resolution number 108-2022 and the committee of finance budget and appropriations. Here is Madam Majesty of the Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. On the recommendation of the committee chair of the committee on finance budget and cooperation regarding barangay supplemental budget number one of barangay Dugan Sur and barangay supplemental budgets number two of barangay Yalay and Tabuk Norte with no objection, I so move for the acceptance, adoption, approval of committee report number 22-05-088 as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposal resolution number 108-2022.
There is a motion for the adoption, acceptance, approval of committee report number 22-05-088 including the attached proposal city resolution number 108-2022 of the city on finance budget and appropriations that it be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Remake. Objection. Chair, here is none. The motion is approved.
See, committee report number 22-05-089. Again, I call on the chairman of the committee on finance budget and cooperation.
The gentleman from Abu Suro is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and majority floor leader. Committee report number 22-05-089 with the subject Sanggulayan Kabataan Annual Budget for CY 2022 of barangay Burgos in the total amount of 265,359 pesos. Mr. Presiding Officer, the above Sanggulayan Kabataan Annual Budget of barangay Burgos was reviewed by this committee and found operative in its entirety pursuant to section 20 of Republic Act 742 subject to budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. In the honor of the committee, this representation recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-05-089 and passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number 109-2022 entitled a resolution declaring Sanggulayan Kabataan Annual Budget for calendar year 2022 barangay Burgos. This city operative in its entirety, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Is there any gentleman or lady would like to comment? Make a remark on the recommendation of the committee chair for any finance budget and appropriations pertaining to each committee report number 22-05-089 including the attached proposal resolution number 109-2022. The chair, here is none. Majority floor leader, please proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. On the recommendation of the committee on finance budget cooperation relating to the SK annual budget without objection or with no objection, I so move for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-05-089 as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposal resolution number 109-2022.
There is a motion for the acceptance, approval, and adoption of committee report number 22-05-089 as described and the I'm passing on second and final reading the attached proposal city resolution number 109-2022. Is there any comment? Remake. Objection. The chair, here is none. The motion is approved.
The committee report number 22-05-090. Again, I call on the gentlemen and honorable gentlemen from Abu Suro.
Thank you, brother. The gentleman from Abu Suro is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer and majority floor leader. Committee report number 22-05-090 with the subject Sanggulayan Kabataan Supplemental Budget number one, CY 2022 of barangay Talik in the total amount of 128,500. Mr. Presiding Officer, the above Sanggulayan Kabataan Supplemental Budget number one for CY 2022 of barangay Talik was reviewed by this committee and found operative in its entirety subject to pursuant to section 20 of Republic Act 10742 subject to budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. In the honor of the committee, this representation recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-05-090 and passing on second and final reading the attached proposal city resolution number 110-2022 entitled a resolution declaring Sanggulayan Kabataan Supplemental Budget number one for CY 2022 barangay Talik. This city operative in its entirety, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Is there any comment? Remake. On the recommendation of the committee chair for any finance budget and appropriations regarding its committee regarding the adoption, acceptance of each committee report number 22-05-090 and the accompanying proposal city resolution number 110-2022. Chair, here is none. The acting majority floor leader, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. On the recommendation of the committee on finance budget and cooperation, chairman, relating to SK supplemental budget number one of barangay Talik, the city with no objection, I so move for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number 22-05-090 as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number 110-2022.
There is a motion for the adoption, acceptance of committee report number 22-05-090 and the attached proposal resolution number 110-2022 that it be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection? Remake. Here is none. The motion is approved.
The committee report number 22-05-091. Since the chairman of committee on personal welfare development is on leave and I call on one of the members of the committee on personal development welfare to render this committee report. I call on the gentleman, the gentleman from the Lipos, Tawo.
The chair, Mr. President. Committee report number 22-05-091 to the latter dated March 11, 2022 from the local city mayor. That was a very kind of hosta. I was seeing those parties to pass the resolution of I being an expert in the environment for the development and marketing abilities for them for technical assistance and positive support from the city. This is very good. In the honor of the committee for permanent and permanent welfare, I would like to recommend for the acceptance and approval of the committee report number 32-05-091. At the same time, passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number 111-222 entitled a resolution authorizing for the posting of a new development and a hosta to sign in a round two agreement by the team, the local government unit of Algeta and the development community for them for technical assistance and positive support from the city. This can be.
Thank you. The gentleman from Lipos, Tawo. Committee report number 22-05-091. Is there any demand for adoption and approval and attached proposal resolution number 11-2022 be passed on second and final reading? Is there any comment? Remake. On the recommendation of one of the sponsors of the latter. Here, the man, Madel, my beautiful girl.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. On the recommendation of the one of the members of the committee on personal welfare development as to the request of the honorable senior to enter into a demand of immunity or development according to the provisions for technical assistance and positive positive support from the set agency without, with no objection, I so move for the acceptance and adoption of your report number 22-05-091 as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposal resolution. as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number one-one one dash twenty twenty-two.
There is uh motion by the acting majority floor leader for the adoption, acceptance of committee report number two-two dash zero five dash zero nine one of the Committee on Welfare, on Personal Development and Welfare. And the attached proposed city resolution number one-one dash twenty twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any objection, comment? The Chair, Heersman, the motion is approved.
The committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine two may I call on the gentle the Honorable Gentleman of Public School.
Uh, gentleman from the floor, the floor will be approved, please read this.
Thank you, Mr. Presiden Officer and Madalke Floor Leader. Committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine two. Uh, Mr. Presiden Officer, I refer to the committee. The letter dated April seven, twenty twenty-two from City Attorney General Day Visitation approved by the Honorable City Mayor requesting August Party to pass a resolution to avail and subscribe the service code we access offered by the Land Bank of the Philippines. Uh, Mr. Presiden Officer, the above subject was considered and reviewed during the committee hearing conducted on May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. A welter, welter PPN together with the members of the committee and representatives from the concerned offices and the personnel from the Land Bank of the Philippines which resulting to a favorable recommendation after Toro Perusa and on that matter, I am heard by impotents to recommend to pass on second and final reading the hearing attached proposed city resolution number one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two entitled the resolution favorably recommending to the Honorable City Mayor they will make him a cost to avail and subscribe the service code we access offered by the Land Bank of the Philippines, Ropita branch to the City Government of Ropita. Mr. Presiden Officer, in the name of the committee, uh this representation uh recommends for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine two and to pass on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two. The titled, uh, Mr. Presiden Officer, uh, read the word go, uh, uh. Yes, I have taken, Mr. Presiden.
Thank you, uh, honorable, beautiful, is there any comment, remark on the recommendation of the committee chair for any finance budget and operations regarding the approval, adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero five dash zero nine two and uh to pass on second and final reading. City resolution number one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two. Uh, one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two as described. The Chair, Heersman, Madalke Floor Leader, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, on the recommendation of the Chairman of the Committee on Finance Budget and Cooperation as to the request of our City Mayor, Mr. Delipos Visitation to pass a resolution requesting his August Party to avail and subscribe the service code we access offered by the Land Bank of the Philippines. With no objection, I so move for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine two as well as passing on second and final reading the accompanying proposed city resolution number one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two.
There is uh motion for the adoption, acceptance of committee report number two-two dash zero five dash zero nine two of the Committee on Finance Budget and operation and that the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-two dash twenty twenty-two be passed on second and final reading. Is there any comment, remark? Chair Heersman, the motion is approved.
The committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine three again may call on the honorable gentleman from Delipos Baho to represent the Chairman of the Committee on Committee on Personal Development and Welfare.
The gentleman from Delipos Baho, the honorable Henry from Galasaka is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiden. Committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine pertaining to the lettered meeting and the review from the Honorable City Mayor, the American Osta, requesting August Party to pass the resolution automating to enter into a random agreement that relates to the work and region partnership by and between the LGU and Jurantung Nahati School of Technology in the work region. The thorough review and consultation of the members of the committee with the concern in this whole thing to a positive and favorable conclusion, there was a consensus of liking the unanimous favor of the committee of passing on second and final reading the proposed city resolution number one-one-three dash twenty twenty-two inside of automating the Honorable City Mayor, the Development Director, the Osta to sign the random agreement relative to the work and region partnership by and between the local government unit of Algeta and Jurantung Nahati School of Technology. In half of the Committee on Personal Development and Welfare I would like to recommend for the acceptance and approval of committee report number twenty-two dash zero five dash zero nine three at the same time passing on second and final reading that creating a touch city resolution uh proposed resolution number one-one-three dash twenty twenty-two entitled automating the Honorable City Mayor, the Director, and Osta to sign the random agreement and starting with the work and region partnership by and between the local government unit of Algeta and Jurantung Nahati School of Technology.
Thank you, Honorable Galasaka. Is there any comment, remark on the recommendation of the gentleman uh from Delipos Baho as uh explained and he stated. The Chair, Heersman. Madame, Madalke Floor Leader, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, on the recommendation of the Committee on Personal Development and Welfare pertaining to the request of the Honorable Mayor, the Honorable Osta to pass a resolution authorizing whether or not of agreement relative to the work and region partnership by and between the LGU and the Labor Union and the English School of Technology Incorporated with no objection, I so move for the acceptance and adoption of committee report number two-two dash zero five dash zero nine three as well as passing on second and final reading the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-three dash twenty twenty-two.
The acting majority floor leader has moved the uh the committee report number two-two dash zero five dash zero nine three be accepted and have passed as that the attached proposed city resolution number one-one-three dash twenty twenty-two, the Committee on Personal Development and Welfare be passed on second and final reading. Is there any comment, remark, objection? The Chair, Heersman, the motion is approved.
I have heard of business, one intention, just not me, two business of quality proposed city resolution, none, proposed ordinance, none. I have two point two for review, two point two point eight proposed supplemental budget number one of Parangitalik, may I respectfully reference to the Committee on Finance Budget and Cooperation.
I think two point two point A is so referred.
Two point B, lettered sixteen, May twenty twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor, the Honorable Osta asking August Party for an appropriate recognition and reward for Miss Sharon Oupi Rivera, a resident of fine specific in the recently banned Rose Medal in the thirty-first Sea Games in Hanwhay, Vietnam, may I respectfully reference to the Committee on Youth, Sports, and Development as well as the Committee on Finance Budget and Cooperation to be led by the Committee on Youth, Sports, and Development.
I think two point A is so referred accordingly.
I have two point four, lettered, lettered sixteen, May twenty twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor, the Honorable Osta requesting the August Party to pass a resolution authorizing him to enter into a random movement by and between the LGU and the Isambulian Kabataan of Parangitalik and the Sankey Alco, this being for the LGU's running of financial assistance to the number in the amount of ten thousand pesos. May I respectfully reference to the Committee on Finance Budget and Cooperation and the Committee on Finance on Youth, Sports, and Development to be led by the Committee on Finance Budget and Cooperation.
I do two point four, I refer to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Operations as with us, the Committee on Sports, Youth, and Sports Development. Uh, with the first meeting major has believed the
I have two point five, first endorsement, they get sixteen, mainly one to two from the Honorable City Mayor, the Honorable Osta forwarding to this August Party of lettered, named twenty twenty-two from Miss Marsha Yes that the LUNUZFVA president citing of options for the association and further requesting that the other ones of the options be considered and approved and ordinance be passed for this August Party to have been there too. They are respectfully reference to the Committee on Economic Enterprise.
I think two point five is referred to the Committee on Economic and the Right.
I have two point six, first endorsement, they get revealed, made one to two from the Office of the City Mayor, vice president assistant for Milo Chiba, the Honorable Forwarding to this August Party of lettered, even date from Miss Perlita, Chief Karud. DC Pamana, IPCCD, Area Coordinator, the trustee for assembly and council resolution authorizing the local chief, executive to represent the City Government, enter this specific implementation agreement, procedure, mutual partnership agreement, and for the sake of implementation, also proposed of they are respectfully without this to the Committee on Social Services.
I think two point six is referred to the Committee on Social Services.
Two point seven, I have two point seven for information, A is that the order number zero two-two dash twenty twenty-two, they get based on the team twenty twenty-two from the Honorable City Mayor, the Honorable Osta, adoption of unintellectual property or anti counterparty and anti anti piracy policy in the workplace.
That's right, I agree. Policy for the earthquake. That's all right. One thousand, I agree, and my policies are what is
Did you take a look at the other one? No, not the other one, no, no.
No, please, no, please. Uh, we are not in consider time, uh, my senior time. Is there any lady or gentleman would like to avail of himself? The I can be there, I.
Sir Presiding.
Uh, uh, you, please, will be nice.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding, uh, since I am the Chairman of the Committee of Development I would like to lay this time to raise the concern regarding our God activities uh for the Isambulian Council Office. Uh, I guess almost every, uh, almost the almost all the departments of our LGU and the NACET, their uh God activities are getting enriched, so I would like to solicit the opinion and the ideas and the suggestion of the honorable members of the Isambulian if ever they are willing to pursue with our God activities uh as to budget, we have an allocated budget for this but I think the some of the staff had already made their initial plans, but this is subject uh for consideration to other members of this Isambulian, if ever they have suggestions as to where, as to when, and anything that they has suggested to be post, Mr. Presiding.
Uh, before recognizing anyone, uh, I, Presiding Officer, would like to I mean, what's a legal basis, you know?
Finance is a
Ah, see, yes, I mean, what's a legal basis, you know? God, God.
I think uh we are allocating, every office is allocating and what much it.
Aside from the allocation, what's a legal basis allocation? What is the title, do you know?
Yearly.
Yearly, you provide the financial matters, but, what is it? You body it, sir, okay, Chairman, Committee Chair. Uh, enlighten, enlighten the people, uh, outgoing vice bureau?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiden, uh, since I look, uh, as a, as soon as I'm, Mr. Presiden, as a member of this Isambulian, so I'm wanting, uh, I enjoy, uh, telling God program and gender and development program yearly as mandated by the uh one of the requirements of the DILG, that the NGO has a tip map for reading and seminars for the employees of the uh DILG, Mr. Presiden Officer. So, at the time, in general, Mr. Presiden Officer, so previous day, Mr. Presiden Officer, generally, he, he hope, uh, what activity? previous Mr. President, generally he he hope for an activity.
And so, deny directive from AI LG here, among others is training and hearties among employees and officers of the serving agency of the city. Here, uh, another, again, in my lot of, uh, the most lot of, so many, uh, people.
Hi, Mr. President, I wish to welcome the honourable акрау, Mr. President. The guide is based on the Magna Carta of Women Republic of Number 9710 or defined as a gender and development program for guide. Last time we had our guide for the past years. We do it, there was a year now, we just made it in the office due to our number, the inclusion of NGOs. But we observed that other offices, they were not able to include NGOs most of the time because COVID took vacation. And the only major hope and trust advance from the allocation for that matter is only the labor. Our only job, your employees, and COVID related solution and organizations.
So on more than that, training and seminar, it has not been enough. And so that, as a matter of fact, we did, we did a scope, we also outside of the office, tamapang?
Yes, Mr. President.
First thing, first thing, ah, pong, pulang budget. Kini, atong total budget, ini siya, pinapari. Total budget, ano?
Mr. President.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. President, uh, for the stadium, the proposed guide, uh, the proposed budget is 460,000, Mr. President, and our office has located 300,000 before this activity.
There is a budget or allocation that we need to have on here, to get it out of any borders for those? 200 or 300? I think that is a last thing, huh? Well, yeah, nah, huh? It is a good, good, enough, might be bad.
Mr. President, Mr. President, to everybody can still report. We have our last word in the top of the 19th. But we know that the volunteers, we never tell them.
They go, uh, this is, this is, this is, this is. They think that, of course, of course, yeah, no, say, no, they are not going to make a picture, of course. Uh, 10 years expenses and not of local government units in the data. So after I, I like to think that pong, na, 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 my budget, you know, it cannot be, be aligned. Cannot be aligned for some other proposed program, but it may not be important, but it, pero ang pinakato o, ano ay matanaman, suwesuwes? Or, as a, may not, may not.
Mr. President.
Yes, Honorable, I think, so, the law.
Honorable President, I, honorable members, this party advanced manifestation of the Committee Chair of the Committee on Gender, Child and Gender Quality and considering that this plan is only up to June 2022. And in fact, the Vice Mayor, Honorable George K. Monti, Honorable Donar Yufa are a growing numbers of this body. The boost that activity is a fortunate for us, Honorable Staff and the wine from the finance cost, it was a block of the national operations. And already, they want to, in the office, most importantly, to spend the last minutes of funding with the honorable, so it could be a sort of a free one activity. So the guide, the disputita party for Vice Mayor George and honorable Hero and so as for us to add one. Mr. President.